Motion passes five to zero. And we'll move right into our legislative report.
Yes. So we've got a couple of things going on in Columbus. The Ohio Department of Education says it has received over 750 comments from the public, which also includes teachers and other educators, about updating its learning standards. Sort of a tweak to our statewide standards. The deadline for comment is tomorrow. A link to the survey is available on ODE's website, education.ohio.gov. Also, April is the month of the military child. Over 34,000 Ohio children are part of military families. The recently passed federal education overhaul, the ESSA, requires military children to be identified in data reporting systems. And then finally, Governor Kasich gives his State of the Estate address Wednesday night in Marietta. He'll be back in Ohio. I'm sure there will be some education policy changes he will suggest, but I don't foresee anything major, at least not this time. That's the update. Not very legislative, but, you know.
Jim? I thought we said branch.
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting here, but they're having a work session tonight as we speak. So I'll do that. Our next meeting is the 19th, and I don't have an update. Our first meeting in May since our meeting was on the 19th.
Okay. And now Colin Kleimer, Principal of Colrain Elementary, for the principals' report.
Yeah, biggest fear of the night is the clicker. So I'm gonna point to my lovely assistant over there. She's gonna help me out here. Again, like to, I thank the board for the opportunity to come up and present our building goals for this year at Colrain El. If you want to go ahead and get that. Goal number one, I thought I was lying. Okay, goal number one, map growth targets. Our goal for beginning of the year was 60% of students K through 5 will meet or exceed projected growth target. In 14-15, fall to spring, we only had 43%. January data point, January data review, we had 52.31% overall met or exceeded projected growth. And then we've broken it down, the different grade levels and the percentage that where we are with them. Math goal was 60% of students in 3 through 5 will meet or exceed projected growth target. Only 35% in year 14-15, fall to spring. Again, the data review in January, 60% overall met or exceeded projected growth. You can see 3rd, 4th, and 5th there. Obviously, 4th and 5th doing really well. And then also, the asterisks at the bottom, 62.35% of IEP students K through 5 met or exceeded their projected growth target in math, fall to winter, which was great. Strategies that we use in order to, I guess, meet the goal by the end of the school year. So some of the things that we've done that are different this year than what we've done in the past is that we posted our goals throughout the building and included all those goals in our meeting agendas so that the staff would see the importance of those goals for the building. Also, our PTA meetings, when I have building reports, principal reports at our PTA meetings, we make sure and we put that information, I put that as part of the agenda. And I do make a point to speak to that on those monthly meetings with PTA. We also did some student goal folders, communicated fall map scores and student goals at fall conferences, and we really focused in on our learning continuum utilized for small group planning. What you see in yellow that's highlighted, you're gonna see that throughout all of our goals, and I'll get to that at the end. But it says teacher-led professional development. And again, we'll talk about that as we, when we get completely finished, because it's something that we're extremely proud of at Colrain that we have going on this year. You want to go ahead? So we're gonna move into goal number two, which deals with discipline. We wanted to reduce the number of out-of-school suspensions during the 15-16 school year by 25% from the 14-15 baseline, focusing on positive intervention strategies with these students and by building relationships. A big charge that we gave to the staff in the fall was to do what they needed to do to build some relationships. We did some things, administration and office staff, winter, 100% of all office discipline referrals into Dazzle, which is our system for the 15-16 school years, so that this data could be used as an accurate baseline. Our baseline goal, our baseline data for goal two, in 14-15, Colrain El had 71 students who were given an out-of-school suspension. A 25% reduction would mean that Colrain El would have 53 or fewer out-of-school suspensions in 15-16. 26 students at CE had three or more referrals to the office in 14-15, and were under 3%. You want to go ahead? Now, as far as what we have going on from basically the 22nd, which was right before the spring break, we had 197 office referrals, student discipline referrals, 68 alternate learning placements are out of room, 35 administrative detentions, and 35 out-of-school suspensions. By the end of the third quarter in 14-15, we, they were 48, we had 48 total out-of-school suspensions. So we reduced the suspensions by 27% to date this school year, which is, it's going well. So we're gonna go, you want to go ahead? You'll see, again, the strategies, positive phone calls home, PBS incentives, mentoring program. You know, one thing that we do, if you go back up to the positive phone calls home, one thing we make a point to do in the office, Mr. Beenbacher and myself and Ms. Helms, is for every negative phone call we have to make saying, you know, like Johnny always gets the bad end of the deal, but Johnny gets in trouble in the office and gets sent in, or gets in trouble in class and gets sent in. You know, we want to make sure that we look for something positive to call Johnny's parents on at some point during, you know, hopefully within the next few days, so that we're able to give some positive information to that parent, which really does help us, because then when we will call and say, okay, a month later, okay, Johnny's fallen off a little bit, what's Johnny done? And then it seems like we've built that rapport with the parents as well, which is huge. PBS, positive behavior supports and our incentives that we have going on. We've introduced a mentoring program at Colrain El. We also have, again, in the yellow shaded, teacher-led professional development. We'll talk about that. We have morning meetings now going on, Classroom Dojo app for communicating with families. And then we also have growth mindset, which I'll get to here in just a few minutes. Okay, goal three, 100% of Colrain Elementary teachers will receive a rating of applying. This is in our evaluation system of 3.0, 3.0 or higher for elements two, tracking student progress, and 41, which is probing incorrect answers with low expectancy students and eye observation by the end of the 15-16 school year. Colrain Elementary leadership rate these elements during 100% of their formal and informal observations, provide feedback to the teachers who are rated below applying. Again, myself and Mr. Beenbacher will collaborate to ensure interator reliability. Go ahead. So the baseline data versus our current performance element two, tracking student progress, you can see there, 14-50, we had 73.9% of teachers were rated applying or higher. 15-16, we're now up to 97.9% of teachers are rated applying or higher. If you look at element 41, again, we picked element 41 because that was one of the lowest ones that we had, that we were not reaching from the data previous. You can see, 15.2% of teachers were rated at three applying or higher. 39 teachers were not rated on that at all last year. So now we're happy to report that 15-16, again, 97.9 teachers are rated at three applying or higher. What that basically is, is if the kid gets an answer wrong, the teacher will, you know, go and move on to another student, but then comes right back to that student once this, that once the answer is given correctly, to make sure that the child that answered it incorrectly at first is re-engaged, and they have the correct answer. So, which is a great, great tool that we've been using and focusing in on this year. You want to go ahead and hit it? Okay, so strategies then, again, protocols, instructional videos, and then there it is, the yellow shaded information I keep talking about. Peer observations, targeting, tracking student progress, element two, probing incorrect answers, element 41. Now, if we go back to the first screen, the first goal, which deals with the map and everything, if you could go back to that strategy, if you don't mind, clear back at the very first one, yeah. Go. And one more. Okay. Teacher-led professional development. I'm very proud to say that December, we had a, we had our in-service day, and Colrain El had 17 teachers that led the professional development on that particular day. It was fantastic. And one of the items that they talked about is that as Adam and I were working with the teachers, seeing some good instruction going on, we also noticed that there were some teachers who were going, doing, you know, going leaps and bounds in the goal folders and how to set all those up and getting the kids engaged. Well, we went to them, we said, we would like for you to share professional development with the staff. And what better way but to have their own peers staying in front of them instead of Adam and Karen and I doing that? It was wonderful. It was great. So if you want to go to the next strategy then, when we had goal two. Yep, right there? Okay. We also, in our rounds of observations and having conversations, we realized that there were some teachers who really took a hold of the building relationships with kids, which was a big, a big focus this, this fall at the beginning of the school year. And we've had quite a few teachers who then decided, you know, we're gonna have what's called morning meetings. And morning meetings, basically, you know, we've been talking, as we move into next school year, restorative justice, that may have been brought up in some of your other board meetings that you've had. And this morning meeting kind of goes hand in hand with that. They call it a little bit differently in restorative justice, but we have teachers who are taking the time to build a relationship within the classroom with the classmates as well, being more of a family-type atmosphere. And if something happens and a couple of students, you know, have some difficulty, let's say, at recess, then the teachers will talk about that with their class the next morning, say, that's really, is that really what we want to present this classroom to be and what you believe in? And really, to have the kids take some initiative in that and say, no, that's really not what we want our school and/or our classroom to be doing. So that was huge. Again, we had part of the 17 staff members, we had quite a few teachers that presented on how they do morning meetings. We also had a couple of teachers talk about Classroom Dojo. And we had a couple of teachers that talked about growth mindset. Growth mindset basically is, when a child says, I can't do something, don't give him that option. Instead, coming up with different kinds of phrases that they can use and having some tools for the teachers to be able to walk those kids in conversation through how they, what part don't you understand? And so what was really neat is that we had a couple of teachers that said, you know, we'd really like to, we really think that this would be beneficial throughout the building. Said, great, you're gonna present in December. Well, I don't, oh yeah, you're gonna do, you're gonna do great. And then it turned out then in January, I think it was in January or February, that we had these same teachers, and we were able to send them to Butler Tech, or Butler Educational Service Center for some additional PD outside of the building, where then they came back and reported again to the group. And what was amazing is that there were actually more people that were interested in this, and we sent more people than to Butler Educational Service Center in regards to that. So it was fantastic. And if you want to go to the last strategy, peer observations. Probably the most proud I am of what's been going on at Colrain is, I took over that building three years ago, and I said to them, I'm gonna do everything I can to have you improve professionally. That's what, that's kind of my job, and do what I need to do in order for you to become the best teachers and the best professionals that you can be. And part of that is, I'm gonna get you out of your comfort zone, I'm gonna have you go and observe other teachers. Well, we made it mandatory last year, and we let them just pick whatever they wanted to. Well, this year, we said, okay, we're gonna do it again, only this time we want you to focus in on our elements that you're being evaluated on, which is element two, tracking student progress, and then element 41, which is the probing incorrect answers. But if you want to add anything additional to it, you can. It was fantastic. They actually ran the entire faculty meeting. They presented, it was phenomenal. And the teachers did a fantastic job with it. And we put out a survey at the end, right before Christmas. Who is leery about putting out a survey, especially right before the holidays? But we ended up getting some truthful answers. Some of it's a little tough to swallow, but that's part of it, it's what we put it out there for. And so we got some really good feedback, and a lot of the feedback we got from that survey was, we want to do more peer observations. So again, I think that's something that the district's looking at having administrators do, and for next year and the year after. So I feel like we're kind of ahead of game, ahead of the game with that. And the teachers have really embraced it, and it's done, it's been a good job. It's been really good experience for our teachers, so. It's kind of what we're doing at Colrain El. I don't know how long that was, but any questions?
Colin, on the, a couple of them where you said, like, last year, 39 teachers weren't observed, and 14 on the other. Why was that?
Well, I think it was, it's because, you know, you've got 41 elements that you're trying to see. And 41 elements that, over a period of time, after, you know, two observations at the time, three observations for some, you know, it's a lot to look at. It's a lot to look for. And you want to do a good job of trying to hit some of the ones that you feel are the middle section, which is the delivery of the content. If it's going to be prior knowledge that you're trying to get to kids, you're introducing the new concept, or are you reviewing? That's the whole middle section of the Marzano. So unfortunately, 41 is an outlier, it's one of those ones on the side that is not part of that instructional domain, even though it's extremely important to the overall instruction. It's not necessarily instruction in the delivery with the content and so on. So we basically looked at the results, and we looked at everything that we did the year previous, which was 14-15, and we picked one that was not hit very often, and it affected a lot of the, it did not affect a lot of the teachers. So, you know, 39 teachers that we didn't hit it on, that's what we chose to do. So, but again, 41 elements, it's, it's a lot to see in 30 minutes. That's the big thing. Yeah, it's a lot to see in 30 minutes. I know when we first got the system, when we went with that system, it's like, okay, do I need to hit all 41? It was kind of a little bit of a panic mode, because there's a lot of times you won't see certain things. Like if they're reviewing the content, the teacher's reviewing the content, there's not gonna be any new content being delivered. So you've got four or five elements in that category that's not even, that you're not gonna see. But that's not, we don't want the teachers then to stand up and go, well, no, well, let's introduce this new concept. The lesson doesn't, doesn't warrant that to take place. It's not part of the flow of the lesson. So don't, you know, just keep doing what you're doing, and we'll hit what we need to see, and we'll, you know, you're gonna score okay. So that's why we chose.
I think it's great to see, put it back on the teachers and let them see more team involved.
Yeah.
It really, it really works better that way.
Yeah, well, and it's, you know, you've been in a leadership position before, Mr. Engle, and, you know, it's always better to have the troops buy into what you're trying to do. It sure makes it an easier pitch for you, but if you stand in front of them and say, this is really important, and then you, you know, get the teachers on board to say, this is, he's right, this is important, it's, you know, hopefully the rubber meets the road, and you're good to go.
Great presentation. There's enough coming, you know, top-down as it is from Columbus and Washington, so anything we can do to, you know, with the peer observations and the other strategies to make it more of a collegial environment and, you know, ground up is a positive.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Okay, do we have any reports from employee organizations? Certificated and licensed? Any reports from school-related organizations? This time we'll move into community comments, and I have one. Mr. Acton?
We're gonna wait until Ross, the presentation, please.
Actually, we've gotta go in the order that our agenda is.
Did he speak at the community?
But if you have any questions or any comments, at the end of the meeting, we have that spot also, as long as it's something that's been talked about during the meeting, that you can, you know, ask a question.
Ross, that is, I'm gonna say that one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You want to wait? Okay. Okay.
Okay, that brings us to, to certificated licensed personnel. And it specifically brings us to 12-1, certified licensed personnel retirements and resignations. You will find one acceptance of administrative resignation and one acceptance of home instruction procedural resignation. Adam, who is just here with Colin, has become a principal, Liberty River School District, so that's his communication, if you should. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and are there any questions or comments? Motion passes five to zero.
The next is classified retirements and resignations. You will find four acceptance of classified resignations. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second, and are there any questions regarding classified retirements or resignations? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a fiscal item, and it's vendor contracts. You will find seven vendor contracts. The superintendent treasurer recommends the Board of Education authorize the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and are there any questions regarding vendor contracts? Motion passes five to zero.
The next is a general business item. It is bid resolution for summer PI 2016. You will find the advertisements for bids, probable cost, permits, and drawings for the approval that are directly related to our summer PI 2016. If anybody would like a copy of the project manual, we have it here for you to look at. And I'm not sure how many pages it is, but it's a lot. So this is a resolution that the Northwest Local School District Board of Education, whereas the Northwest Local School District Board of Education wishes to advertise, receive bids for capital improvement projects at Colrain High School, Northwest High School, White Oak Middle School, Colrain Middle School, Houston Elementary School, and wishes to approve the specifications for the renovations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the bid resolution summer PI 2016 as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and are there any questions? Motion passes five to zero.
The next category or item is a general business item also. It is a resolution to purchase accessible bleachers for Colrain High School and Northwest High School through TCBN Buying Cooperative. Below is the agreement to purchase bleachers for the two buildings. This allows us to use state term pricing by going with TCBN and the ability to have them installed prior to the fall sports starting games in 2016. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution to purchase accessible bleachers for Colrain High School and Northwest High School through the TCBN Buying Cooperative.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and are there any questions or comments?
This would be to make these bleachers handicap accessible.
Handicap accessible. And I've got Dick here from Roth, Cravill, and Chris McKee, if you guys have any questions for on board.
Okay, any other questions?
Does that change seating capacity at all, up or down?
We had to reduce a few seats in order to get in the wheelchair seats in front of the road. So we moved that.
Any other questions? Can you call for the vote? Motion passes five to zero.
All right, the next item is a general business item also. It is a resolution by the school district board to accept the master plan for the Ohio School Facilities Commission Expedited Local Partnership Program, ALP. This resolution is a master plan that is similar to the one that Roth developed two to three years ago. Nothing much has changed there. We have an out if needed in Section J, if we need to terminate it any times, because I have, as I have told you from the get-go, we did pass our bond issue. We will control what goes into these buildings. The state will not control this. This is the way to build our three new buildings and also build funds that will not cost taxpayers new money to build schools like Colrain El and Colrain Middle. So we expect with our choice of design-build contractor, Megan Skanska, that they're very familiar with OFCC requirements, and Pete, and Evans, and we will have no problem meeting the requirements and them matching and approving us as we move forward in building three buildings. So it absolutely makes no sense not to go into this ALP agreement and not take the $17 million that the state will award us just for following the OFCC manual, which is very similar to what we would design anyway. But if there comes down to things where we want to make changes, then we make changes. We discuss it with Megan Skanska and SHB, and we put the changes we want. One of the changes that I want to bring to your attention would be, we talked about a wood floor in the elementary that is below Pleasant Run Middle School, because the Pleasant Run Middle School gym floor is so small as it is. So if you look at what the floor actually costs, Chris, help me out here if I'm wrong, there's only about $100,000 difference in what they would put there and then upgrading to a wooden floor. So it's minute, it might be a little more, but.
Actually, not much different. There's more to make.
So as we look at design, and we look at facade and the outside appearance, and then if we look at 21st century learning and how we design that, it all fits within the OFCC manual, and it's all what's best for kids. So again, though, if we don't like what OFCC recommends, then they will work with them, and we'll decide what to move forward with. But again, it was our taxpayers who passed this, so we want to get what they want when we develop these schools. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the resolution to accept the master plan for the Ohio School Facilities Commission Expedited Local Partnership Program, ALP, as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, Todd, I just have a question. In the, in the project shares, it talks about the total project cost of 209 million, state shares 45 million, local shares 163 million. Now, I realize about 80 million, 80 million of that was what we passed in the bond levy.
86 million was total, 1 million for air conditioning at Colrain El. And then the final numbers, Chris?
This is, we're setting a ceiling here, obviously.
Right.
Well, that's for the entire district plan.
So the entire master facility plan, to redo, see, when the state came through with their master facility plan, they declared some buildings needed to be demolished and rebuilt, and then some needed to be renovated. So if you do the total plan, as the next board, and as you and I and all of us are gone in 10 years down the road, that's what it would cost if you stay with this. But the state funding system stays with it and continues to give you your 22% as you move forward.
Anybody else? Motion passes five to zero.
The next is a certificated licensed personnel info action. It is a new district nurse supervisor salary schedule. Currently, our district nurse is paid as a teacher salary. We need to be, to fall in lines with the supervisor schedule. There basically is no change in the amount of salary, but it gives more supervisory responsibility for the nurse over our district nurses. And what's happening is, we have some kids coming to school with more needs than ever before. So we need better supervision to make sure the right things are being applied to assist the students. And it also gives Shonda the ability, who is currently our district nurse, to participate in evaluation and give feedback to the principals, so they need to work hand in hand. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the new district nurse supervisor salary schedule as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and any questions or comments? Call for the vote. Motion passes five to zero.
The next category, certificated licensed personnel info action for new job descriptions. You will find a draft of a math skills teacher, a reading skills teacher. The math and reading skills are changing our tutor positions in our middle schools to teaching positions due to needs in our middle school. This allows them to be a teacher of record, offer more assistance as needed for our students, and offer a larger variety of courses as needed. and offer a larger variety of courses as needed. I also sent you an update. We're looking at bringing school sites back on our payroll. We currently outsource them through Hamilton County Educational Service Center. We think from the work that Heidi has done, and she has been very instrumental in this, and I really appreciate it, looking at her past experiences and what's best for our district, our sites currently don't participate on our RTI teams. They don't have the flexibility that we need. Hamilton County says, you'll do this, you'll work your hours, and then you leave. Well, we need them to be a part of our teams, be a part of the building, give more input to behavior, to learning, so on and so forth. So we think we can hire them at the same price, if not cheaper. And Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong at any time, or Daryl, but we think it's a great move to bring them back on us. And we're not adding new positions, we're just going from outsourcing them to bringing them back where they can become more part of the building. And then the district nurse draft is there, and that's Shonda's changing responsibilities. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the new job descriptions as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Well, you guys are in unison tonight. It's been moved in second, any questions or comments? I just want to say, I'm very glad to see that we're moving the psychologist back because I think that's really important. I think there's so much more of a need, and it's really going to be what's best for the kids. Okay, Chris, call for the vote? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a certificated licensed personnel action item. It is the four approval of initial administrative appointments, is one approval of change in status, is one approval of extended service contract, it is two approval of certified leave of absence, and is one approval of a home instructor. These are where we remove the instructional coaches from the elementaries and assign assistant principals to these areas. Another way we're going to try to save money I want to bring to your attention is, I'm going to talk to the district and we're going to talk to our administrators about when administrators and secretaries at the high school and middle school level retire or leave the district for another job, that they be replaced on shorter contracts. So for example, an administrator would go to 200, from a 247-day contract to a 210-day contract. A secretary would go from a 261 to a 212. We already have those salaries in place. It would not be everybody in the building, but if you take a building, I'll just throw out Colrain High School as a principal, five assistants and an AD, two of the four assistants, I guess, two of the four assistants would be a shorter contract, and the other three would stay the 247. This is a way that we can save money by lowering the amount of days we pay out for salary, and we don't see the need for them to be in the building all five at 247 days. So it reduces administrative salaries, but we're doing it as people leave through attrition, through retirement, or resign and go elsewhere to become new assistants. It also brings me back to the ones that were hired here as assistant principals to the elementary were hired on 200-day contracts. So there was not much additional there.
As far as the secretaries, do we feel like you'll be able to get everything done?
Well, we will analyze that, but for example, I can talk about Northwest High School, that's where I came from. So you have two in the office that are 261. You have a counselor who's 261. You have one back in the career center who's 261. So basically, in the summer, you're doing a lot of paperwork, a lot of ordering, a lot of POs. I mean, I don't want to downgrade what they're doing. They're very valuable, and we could not replace them on a principal, we'd be lost without them. But they can share duties. The push over the summer from the counselor's office is just transcripts and that, so that stays pretty busy. But then you take a full-time secretary also for the AD, that's a must because they're doing scheduling, cancellations, everything else. But we have other ones where we can flex their schedule and go from a 247 to a 212 easily, and then still get the same amount of work done.
There actually, that, there might be people that actually will like that.
Oh, there will be. And just to remind everyone, surrounding districts close during the month of July. So a lot of that is starting to occur. There's not much access to the buildings, there's not much need. Like I said, at the high schools, it's sports 24/7. It never ends. It's the arts, it's the music 24/7, it never ends. But the academic part, besides the request for transcript, it's mostly processing orders and everything, but that's mostly done by Chris's due date. And if they're not ordered by then, they don't get them, so. We think it's a good move and a good way to save the district money and to stockpile as much money as we can to see if we can do something.
Todd, how much money do you anticipate saving?
We, I wanted to run it past you first before I started calculating, so this is just general information for you to make sure you guys are good. I'm going to give you a couple of days to give me some feedback. But if you go from a 247 to a 210 contract, probably save about $15,000 per person? I don't know. I'd be guessing. It depends on the person, how many years you've got in. I'll get some exact numbers, I just wanted to put it out in front of you for now. So the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and are there any more questions? Okay, Chris? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a classified personnel item. Revised assistant salary schedule includes new Title I assistants. New salary schedule continues steps in some categories where they used to end. The schedule also differentiates health assistants that have an RN and allows for additional pay based on degree. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the revised salary assistant schedule as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and are there any questions? Chris? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a classified personnel item also. It is one approval of an initial appointment, two approval of change in status. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any comments, questions? Okay, Chris? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a student services item. It is an extended field trip request. It is an overnight field trip request for the Northwest High School cheerleaders to attend a summer cheer camp at Dennison University. Northwest High School cheerleaders will attend Dennison University Cheer Camp July 28th through July 30th in the summer. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the extended field trip as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It moved in second, any questions?
Are they using our buses or are they using charter buses? Do you know?
I have Paulette.
Yeah, I believe they are using our buses.
Dennison's R45?
Yeah.
They'd be a drop-off and a pickup three days later.
Times have changed. I drove all of us in high school to Ball State.
Camps are unique. I know basketball, parents will go because they like to stay and watch. I'm not sure cheerleading is the same, but I know show cards and other things are, so some of them might just drive themselves up and save the cost because that's going to add on to their fee. So no charter bus will be used for the cheerleading camp, though. But I would assume parents are going to drive the kids up, to be honest with you, just like they do the basketball camps.
Did you ask for a motion yet?
Yes, superintendent.
I moved in five seconds.
Okay. Okay, call for the vote. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, at this time, it's community communications. Mr. Acton, if you have any questions regarding anything we've talked about tonight?
Just working there too, we didn't get that, and I'd like to hear Mr. Acton off.
We didn't have a presentation scheduled, so is there a specific thing you'd like to talk to him about?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, come on up and feel free to ask him anything you want, Mr. Acton. We'll be glad to answer it.
My understanding is he's going to make the presentation about the ADA tonight. Sorry, I misunderstood that. But I want to thank Amy Wells, Chris, and Dick, who are rushing some information to me today, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you. The question being is, and Chris and I talked about this earlier, you showed me the plans of what Dick was going to talk about this evening, and I took for granted he's going to make a presentation. That's the reason why I wanted to hold off until I seen the presentation, so everybody in the room could see what I'm going to bring up, basically. Corrine High School is going to be my second topic. Northwest High School, I can understand where the location and all for the ADA or disabled areas is going to be. My only question is, and I think Chris answered this pretty well, it's going to take some time. He said, kids, sit down, these people can't see. And that probably going to be a couple of football games, but he said he'd have somebody take care of that problem there. My concern is Corrine High School, and as I've told the board before, I've had three kids, one granddaughter go through there, actually three granddaughters, I forgot the one up in New York now. And I've got one and possibly three more grandkids that are great grandkids, if you want to call it, that will be going through that school district, through our school district. The situation as it seems now, and I wish I had a map here so I could show you what the idea is. Do you have any slides or anything showing the Corrine High School?
I have slides, but you have drawings here.
Do you have enough that you can show everybody?
We have the permit, we have the permit drawings here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I be put on the screen here, hopefully? I need a picture of the field itself. Here we go.
That's northwest.
Do you want northwest?
Yeah, that's northwest.
That's northwest to Colrain. Northwest, there's not much to be done there, but.
It's cool.
Can you scroll up so it shows the field at home? Right there. What's being recommended by Roth and is there on the, I'm going to say my left side, on the upper corner, there's going to be, Dick, correct me if I'm wrong, or Chris, four to seven handicap parking spots put there.
Total.
Total vates. And due to the elevation of the property, the big gates that are there now, it's a pretty sharp drop down to the track. Correct? You're talking about putting a...
Parking, it will be just about level through the track, but the sharp drop is from where the bleachers are, the driveway to go along around down to the parking, which is the northwest corner.
Okay, but the double gate that you go in through the stadium, there's a pretty big drop there also.
You mean at top where the steps go down?
By the locker room?
Yeah, there's a...
No, not where the locker, where the band comes, right there.
That's the parking.
Go down the hill where the utility building is.
Right.
Okay, there's a pretty sharp drop from that parking area where the double gates are to go down.
But is the parking lot going to be down at field level?
The parking lot will be down at the field level, so that every, what we've developed is an accessible route. So this provides a level access from the parking lot to the wheelchairs. Other disabled people can move usually across that to the seating area. And really, the accessible route includes the concession stand and the restrooms.
Okay, Dick, here again, I don't want to disagree with you. At the end of that stadium for practice football games and soccer games, at that gate, there is a drop down to the track area, I'll call it.
Yeah, but you drive, you drive down, and there's a little grave.
You mean at the end zone? Are we, are we trying to miss something?
But the parking level's going to be down at the track level, so you will be, you'll have a level access going out of the parking area into the track.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the ADA parking lot will be down at field level? Yes.
At field level, so there'll be a drop.
So you'll drive down.
Yeah, you'll be dropping down in your car.
Car.
And once you, you'll get down there, once you're at that level, you'll be level all the way across.
Okay, is that going to be in the area where the practice football field is and next is the maintenance shed?
It's back towards that direction. It's not going to the car.
Okay. The area we were talking about from that parking lot over to the stadium, you've got to remember two things. Number one, we're seniors. Number two, the kids are going to be around that concession stand, and I don't know how many people have tried to get through those kids at football time, almost impossible. You got somebody with a wheelchair coming through there, it'll be twice as hard.
Well, what about when you come from the parking lot, come onto the track?
You can't go onto the track.
You can't go onto the track with a wheelchair?
No. I say no, I don't know, that's up the athletic department.
I mean, that would be, so you don't have to go through where all the kids are, you can come right onto the track, there's a gate right there.
I can't answer that.
There's a gate right here.
Is that a possibility?
Okay, where's the gate on the other side?
The gate would be open, and you could go right to there.
There's a gate, the gate on the other side.
I mean, I will agree with him, during a football game, sometimes, even if you're not handicapped as an adult, it's hard to get through there. So yes, a wheelchair or a...
No, I think it's an excellent plan what he's got up, but I suggested some plans to the athletic director when I met him there, and he says I'll look into it. That's the best you can do. But it's a long trip from there over to the stadium. According to that picture there, the ramps are going to be on the left-hand side. You can't put them there, that's where the steps are from upstairs down.
You work that out, and, and the actual ramp continues, it's upward slope as you come across the front of the seat. So there is enough room.
There, you get a ramp in without backing into steps. Because we did, you're absolutely right, the steps terminate close to where that is, so we looked that out.
Okay, Dick, there's about, from the stadium to the fence, and you have the track, there's about a five-foot area.
Yep, it's about, it's about 10 feet. That does get narrowed by the four feet that the platform is, projects out the front of it. And the other, the other part of that is that we developed seating areas so that there is limited reason really to walk in.
One of those seats, because I know that, you mentioned that concern.
Yes.
And we can paint stripes, blue stripes to indicate that that's for wheelchair and handicap seating in those areas. The key to this is that it's really not just seating areas, but it also incorporates an accessible route, which allows the entire community, the disabled people that are with them, you know, it has community seats. And it's really, it's something that we looked into and determined needed to be done as, to comply with the codes and the way that laws are in, as a complete system. And the way it's set up, the system involves parking areas, unloading areas, an accessible route, restrooms, the seating to watch the game, and all of that then works as parts of a whole. And this really became the best way to do it. I know that we, and I think you had talked to the athletic director about a platform up top, and when you look at the platform up top, you determine that it really didn't have enough room to do everything you needed to do. Didn't have enough room to have parking, it's way up back where everybody else was. Well, that route became long too. So it became really the best option for doing this. So it became really the best option for doing this. And the thing that I think is really important about this is that it accommodates the blind. It accommodates people in wheelchairs. It accommodates people who need to off off or park. And it includes the concession stand and restrooms. It becomes actually an additional amenity to what you're doing right now. I think right now you come in the top and there's access to the press box.
Right.
That was developed some years ago. So this, this adds to that and adds those amenities.
Right, the press box. I don't know if you've been there or not, Dick, but there is probably a 48 by 60-foot lumber area there. And I think I brought it up to the athletic director last year that one of the boards had looked at. How long it took them to get it together, I don't know. But that's a dangerous area. I dare you or anybody in this room try to go down those steps to get into the seat. I've got a lot of elderly friends that were members of the Corrine football fans. Last year I went to a football game there and my two daughters had to pull me up out of there because I could not get up those steps. I took it into my life to go down two steps. I'm not the only one. You guys are all going to be here someday. I'm just letting you know. My idea that I pitched, and I still pitch it today because I think cost factor, which I don't know what the cost numbers are yet. But up at the top of the stadium, the west side, Corrine Avenue, the west side of the press box, there's probably a 20 by 40 area there that is open. Come in the ticket gate, come down the ramp, the walkway, forge the press box. You make the left-hand turn, you're there. You can park wheelchairs there. You can park lawn chairs, everything else there. The question comes up with the restrooms, which I have no answer for this. If you go from there over to the restrooms, you're fighting kids again. You've got to get up, go down the ramp, you go through the kids and all that. Mr. Detschler, you suggest using under track. I don't think you can use that track. You'll notice the football players and all of it, they run across to the wooden frame. That's the big problem. I don't know. I know years ago, we didn't have tracks like that. We had sender tracks. You could do it. But this year, I don't know.
Putting a wheelchair on a track is no problem. Northwest allows Jason to get to sit with his wheelchair all up and down the sideline every year. They won't kind of work because they have to clean it up.
Yeah, well, Tom, you know about that. So I don't know. I'm just-
That, that doesn't hurt it. The other thing is, we're dealing with a, obviously a stadium that was put in a long time ago.
Correct.
If you live at all GMC stadiums, because I've lived at them for the past 12 years with my boys, this is a lot closer than East, West, Sycamore, Oak Hills, Mason. As far as the closest you can park to be able to go down by that building and then walk across and get through the track and over there is a lot closer than any of the other GMC stadiums by far. It doesn't make it easy, but-
I disagree with you on one of them. You know, but my suggestion was to build this platform up to top the restroom situation.
Do you mean continue on the press box?
Not the press box. A platform to the left side of the press box. So you're standing back in the back. Or let's say you're facing the press box.
If you're looking down onto the field from the press box.
Yeah, on the left side.
To the left.
A continuation of that little platform that's there now. Just go across that way, maybe 30 feet by 24 feet.
Pretty big drop off there that you would have.
You'd have to put pilings and everything like that. That's why I was waiting to see if Dick made a presentation, to see what new cost factors are going to be. But myself, with what you've got here right now, I'm going to be huffing and puffing by the time I get to my seat. People pushing wheelchair, they're going to be huffing and puffing too. And as far as access to restrooms, just put up at that top level. Go out by the press, or out by the ticket box. There's the school right there.
Well, I think some of this could be assisted through communication. If they know you're coming to Colrain High School, we have the United Nights at Colrain. We have the cards at, or United Nights at Northwest. Kids will assist in any way they can. Nobody should have to push a wheelchair. Our kids will take the wheelchair over for you. Doesn't shorten the distance, but with communication, we can work with anyone who wants to attend the game. Clear out paths, go either direction you want to go. That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Tom, I don't want to argue with you. You've got your views and I got mine. But all I can say is I remember what I'd say was, three or four years ago, we had the military people there to honor them. We had a heck of a time getting in and out of that stadium. And the back gates were open. You know, I'd rather sit up higher to watch a ballgame or a soccer game or a track meet instead of field level. And that's what you're going to have to do at Northwest, basically. And closing, does anybody know what the budget is for this? Dick, Chris, Amy?
Chris should have it.
So it's about $30,000 at each school?
$30,000 at each school. Turn the lights out on this.
It's $30,608 at Northwest, $31,558 at Colrain.
Has there been a construction manager appointed yet?
Yes. It was selected last, the design-build contractor?
No, contractor.
No, why?
Contractor. Somebody who's the boss over all the other guys.
No, that's going out for biz. That's the big package.
Okay, what newspaper?
Inquirer.
Inquirer, okay.
It should be on the website also.
That's basically all I have at this meeting. Thank you very much. And hope you'll take us old people's consideration, ideas. Let's all work together to get this, so we can get us old people back in the stadium. Because I know, we haven't been coming. And I'm sure Ms. Key, if she's still here, Jenny, I'll put something in the newspaper that, hey, they're fixing the stadiums up so you'll, people can get back into them again.
Right. And, and don't misconstrue me saying we will help you. Whether it comes in the way you want it or the way it currently is, our kids will still assist and help it. And we have great kids at each building. And that's exactly what they do on Friday night. So whether it ends up up top like you like it or down below, we can have kids on the lookout because that's something that we should do for our community. So we will improve on that. That I can promise you.
Tom, I can tell you, the kids at Northwest, when I went up there to visit that, one took me almost by the hand and took me to the athletic director, which happened to be coming out of the building at the same time. Very nice young lady. Very well educated, very well thought of. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Any other community members? Okay. With that, we'll go to board members' comments. Chris?
Pam, nothing for me tonight.
Okay, Michael?
I don't have anything tonight.
I don't have anything either. We're going to be out so we can go watch the basketball game.
I'll be fine until 9:17.
An hour and thirty.
Yeah.
I'll be home.
You've been out of your pool for a long time.
Me and Colin are good buddies, so yeah, I thought it was real encouraging to see what he's doing with his, his teachers and staff over there. And it looks like they're really on the right path. I encourage all the other departments and schools to get on, on task with involving their, their people as team members and putting, putting forth to the, to the team and getting the job done. And it looks like Colin's team is definitely doing that.
That does remind me of something. Todd, at a future meeting, I've just been thinking about this and some of the things we can bring up at meetings. Our services for ELL are pretty extensive in this district now. We have a very large and growing ELL population. If we could just kind of outline that for the district or for the community, I think that would be helpful.
And I'd just like to say there's a, a lot going on now that spring break is over. Lots of activities, not only athletic events, but we've got music programs going. Check the calendar, check on the website to see. There's a lot of great news going on in all the schools. And I want to just encourage people to stop and see the musicals, the, you know, whether it's the track meets or whatever, but wish all of our students good luck and that's it.
Pam, I hate to interrupt. I didn't know where to put this. But since you just mentioned everything that's going on, I got an email from Mr. Smith today. Congratulations to the Colrain High School Varsity Winter Guard, who was awarded the Silver Medal in the Circuit State Championships for Scholastic A. This is the 15th time in the history of the school that the color guard has medaled in the Circuit State Championships. Congratulations also to the Colrain High School Varsity Indoor Percussion, who was awarded the gold medal and finished the season undefeated in the Circuit State Championship for Scholastic A. He brings these up. The reason that I have after each time I say circuit is because in the arts, we compete in circuits and not states. So this is equivalent to winning a state championship in sports. So David was very proud of the Colrain card.
Can we recognize them at a board meeting?
Yes, we can.
If it's equivalent to that, they should be here. Okay. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to end the meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Anything else?
While we're waiting, next Thursday night is the Northwest Mount of Honor with Rocky Horton.
Oh, you need to advance.
She's going to kill him. It, it should be now. I-
How about now?
How about now?
Gotcha.
Maybe. You know, I just wasn't ready to leave yet. It's so early. I'm just sitting here watching you sweat. No? Okay, it was, motion?
I, I motioned. Yes. Okay.
Here we go. Thanks, Michael.